To order, if you join me in the federal legion.
Athletic Legion.
Okay, I would like to start this meeting with everybody making an introduction for the people online, for the people in the audience and because we do have a lot of rich faces. So if we start at the end of this table. With you, Chris.
Chris Young, Assistant Superintendent of Court Department Instruction.
Thanks, and for the director of technology.
Lori Schmidt, Business Administrator.
I'm a Suboshi, Executive Assistant to the Superintendent and Work Clerk.
Alyssa Bascom from Charleston at a large member school board.
Sarah Vogel, Representing Acworth, School Board Member.
Kevin Keats, Representing Langdon.
Harry Schwabe, I represent Alstead.
Shelley Andrews, I represent Charleston.
Bill Nicky, I'm Human Resources Director.
I'm Abby, and I'm the Senior Representative at Fall Mountain.
Thank you very much. Our first order of business today is to fill the seat. Left vacant when Jenny Donovan moved on. So. Okay, so we have with us today, Chaz Street. You would come and introduce yourself and let us know a little bit about you.
Oh, I used to be, you know, a long time ago. God, I can't remember what it was, 2010 or something like that. I was then a selectman in Walpole for three years. One term. My career was Air Force and then I came out, went to King State, got my master's education, teaching certificate. I was a district sub for two years here. And so I was actually in this building because nobody else wanted to come to the high school. But it was a very good experience and that was before I ran for the board, that I got elected to the board. Then you can't work for yourselves, so. But alas, I've been in Walpole since it was bought in 2000, when we moved in in 2001. And this, you know, typical parent active in a lot of stuff. Booster clubs and all sorts of great things. My kids did very well here, had a valedictorian and number three in his class. They both went off to the Air Force Academy. They're back. They came back. They were military grads and Walpole is the only hometown they ever had, so. Frankly, now they're, they're in love with the place, so. It's all good. And so there was an open seat here and someone suggested, you know, that I apply for. Their first situation, I guess, until the next election, so.
Next one, glad you did. Thanks for being here. Did anybody have any question for Mr. Street?
Any questions at all?
I just noticed that I think you're going to be out of town or out of state come January.
Well, historically, for a number of years now, I go to Florida in January. And whatever the last three meanings are, I will probably be, have to be zooming in. I don't know whether you, they can vote from a Zoom. Can you vote from a Zoom or not?
We can, for the most part, we have, you can?
You can.
Let me do a roll. Oh, voting, yes, yes, I'm sorry.
I, I will be zooming in. Other than that, I have a trip to Turkey and Greece in the middle of October. But I don't think it conflicts with any board meetings. Any other questions? Where is Deb? Is she gone yet?
She is.
Oh, that's bad. Just missed the best you might be here tonight.
Certainly been a fantastic interim for us.
Yeah.
But our.
Yeah, she was, when I was on the board before Deb said, so. It's a good experience.
We've appreciated everything she's brought to us and kept us well. We're going in the right direction, for sure. We're going through the, we, 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 but yeah, yeah.
Can I have a motion to approve Mr. Street as our Walpole representative?
So moved.
Second. Any other questions or concerns for the board regarding? I'm sorry, you did say we have Jamie online. Okay, so.
I am here.
So this is how to. So Jamie, how do you vote?
Teague votes yes. Welcome aboard, Chaz.
Yes.
Yes.
Kevin, yes.
Sarah, yes.
Alyssa, yes. Welcome aboard.
So what we will do in order to bring Mr. Street on for this meeting and the next things on our agenda is can I have a motion to recess for a few minutes so that Misty can administer the O S office?
Oh, sorry, so moved.
Do I have a second? All right, Jamie.
Teague, yes.
Yes.
Kevin, yes.
Sarah, yes.
Alyssa, yes. All right, we will be back momentarily. All right, so one thing we don't have on this agenda is our student report. Can I have a motion to move, to add that to the agenda at this place? And then we will move on to the rest of the agenda.
Go on. Second.
Any questions or concerns about why we do such things? Jamie?
Teague, yes.
Mr. Street, how do you vote? Shelley?
Yes.
Aaron, yes.
Kevin, yes.
Sarah, yes. Alyssa, yes.
All right. We welcome you to the meeting. Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm set up.
Sure.
Yeah, all right. So this is your report for everything up until last week. We didn't include anything from this week, just because the meeting was postponed. So as the school year starts, there's a lot to look forward to. To start on the right foot, the seniors participated in their senior sunrise, although it turned out to be very cloudy and sort of rainy, but still a lot of fun. A majority of the seniors still showed up and there was coffee and donuts and it was just a good time to catch up with friends. Now additionally, the Fall Mountain Food Truck Festival was a few days later. That was a great success. There was a lot of food vendors and like things to buy. And the community came out and enjoyed the great food gifts, live music by Lucas Doscher, one of the Fall Mountain one. While all fundraising for the class of 2027.
Sorry, just pulling in now. You want me to do the next one? Yeah, sure.
Okay. But that being said, students are finally settling and finding success in their new classes. Freshmen took this year by storm already and the rest of Fall Mountain is excited to see what they do in the future. Fall Mountain students participated in their first spirit week of the school year, which ended in a surprise and well-deserved donut party. The seniors ended up winning, which is very good. This was a success, as there's been more involvement than usual.
And recently, the club fair, college fair took place in the school, which allowed for upcoming freshmen and incoming students to learn about all Fall Mountain kind of has to offer, which is quite, quite a bit. And the upperclassmen were able to take a look at some of the colleges they potentially want to apply to in the future. However, as of this year, there is a new food policy that was put into place by the state of New Hampshire, and we all know, although there have been a lot of complications about this rule, some clarity on the law. People have followed this law with mental problems. Along with this, Fall Mountain did implement the new BYOD policy, which specifically been students from having the BYODs and having to use the standard Chromebook that was issued to them in the year. But we will say that people have been handling it well. There was a couple of students who just wanted a little bit of clarity on the BYOD policy in accordance to the new law.
For people listening, Ian, can you tell us what BYOD stands for?
Oh, yeah, sure. That was the bring your own device. That was on the system. It went to a couple of years back and it just kind of let students bring in their own Chromebooks. But students have been in accordance with the new law, yet some struggle to stay away from their offices. So we've had a couple of detentions because of the.
And finally, as we move forward into the school year, there are more exciting things to look forward to, such as soccer, volleyball and football games will be occurring weekly. And attendance has been great already. Fall Mountain, the football team actually has their final home game this Friday. It's senior night. So we're encouraging everyone to come and support them. Coming up in October, Ms. Westover, one of our PD and health teachers, will be holding the annual Family Feud tournament, which is always a major hit. So many people signed up for it and it's always a lot of fun. And AP Biology students have, well, this week, Fat Bear Week, which is, has also been a little of the news. And they're excited and and explain their passion and excitement over it. And overall, there's a lot to look forward to in the coming months. Thank you. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions or thoughts or anything for student reps?
Did I hear correctly, it's the last home football game?
Yeah, it's Friday, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Seems early.
The year has gone fast already, for sure. All right, well, thank you both very much. Next on the agenda is a non-public session. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to go on non-public for reason A.
And B.
And B, sorry.
Can I have a second?
Seconded.
All right, Jamie?
Teague, yes.
Yes.
Kevin, yes.
Sarah, yes.
Somebody say yes. Thank you, and we invite our leadership team in with us. So for the rest of the people here, we will be back. I'm going to say momentarily, but yes.
Yes, they be.
Nice. Our visitors under comments, if anybody would like to speak at this time? You're on the agenda.
What's up?
You are on the agenda later if you want to be speaking now too.
So just real quick.
Hello, my name is George and so I'm the boy, varsity soccer coach here at Fall Mountain. And I'm just here tonight to see if there was a decision made on a proposal we brought forward the last month in naming a school building after an alumnus that passed away earlier this year. Was in our program and we're looking to honor him with that. So, you know, trying to tend to select to see if there's one to give a vote on that.
Thank you, very well done.
Thank you.
All right, so no other members. You're welcome to speak later if you'd like. And I have a motion to approve the minutes of August 25th public meeting.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or concerns on those minutes?
I have a couple of questions. There's just a follow-up from things discussed then. The, there was a boiler issue at North Walpole. Do we know that get?
I think we can take those things up under old business.
Okay.
But if, so do you have questions about how the minutes are written or?
No, 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 no.
Put it in there, okay?
I'm fine with the minutes, just following up on things that were left over.
Okay, definitely bring those up under old business. All right, so you know other questions? Jamie?
Teague, yes.
I assume you would be saying such vote, Shelley?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Kevin, yes.
Sarah, yes.
Alyssa, yes. Thank you very much. All right, maybe we have the administrators' reports? Anybody want to start?
I have to wait, I'm sorry, they don't have.
Yes, please.
Okay, so I have been, well, I'm not, not I alone. Scott and I have both been working very diligently, putting in a lot of time and effort into completing the DOE 25. The two of us working with the single file has posed some challenges, but they're growing pains and we're, we're going through them. Because we need to not have only one person in the office that can handle doing the report. So we did submit the report to the Department of Education today. We did receive some validation warnings that we have to clear. We've already identified what the problem was. Again, with us working in the two, both of us working in the same report, I was assigning specific tasks and doing other things and I forgot to assign a page and I didn't pick up the page either, so. We have to break out some of our special education details. It doesn't impact at all the dollar amount that's going back to the towns to reduce taxes.
Can I ask you a clarifying question?
Yes.
Warning doesn't mean something was wrong. It just meant it was, you need to add a little more information.
There was, there was an anomaly within the, the data and so it was like, hey, is this really correct, you know? So, and it wasn't correct because we didn't put anything on that page. So it was a great, good flag. I don't know why it wasn't built into the document itself, like they have so many other checks and balances, but anyway, so they will be resolved in the morning. So I do have the DOE 25 and the MS 25 here for you to sign because I do need to submit those signature pages as well. And when we have the, the, all of the validations cleared and approved, I will make the report available to you by PDF. We are returning a little over 1 million to reduce taxes. When I spoke with you end of May, we were at about, I think, 780-ish thousand or 730,000. And at that time, we were looking at a reduction in our tuition revenue. And we also, I told you at that time that I was unsure about some of our special ed costs and so I have was giving you a conservative estimate. We were able to free up some of those funds, didn't need to use them. And I did a deeper dive into the tuition and realized that there was some more revenue to be recognized. So those were big pieces for the change in the amount. I am working on a itemized document where I'm not addressing each and every line, but any large variances between budget and actual. I'm working on a document so that will be available for your review if you'd like, or anybody's review of the Budget Committee. I've already provided a spreadsheet to Jamie to share with Budget Committee. I think they meet this week. But in, in, it's okay, well, whichever. So I'm trying to have a document, my, my explanations completed for them before they meet. The document I have it a couple pivot tables so they can easily dive into object codes or functions, you know, whatever they want to, however they want to dissect the report. Something that everybody, you know, Shelley, you mentioned before October 1st, yay. And I will let the towns know when this is finalized too. Something that didn't occur to me until just recently in speaking with the state, because I've been in constant touch with them. The state can't set tax rates until they get all pertinent pieces. And the special education aid, the Department of Education is still compiling those numbers. The deadline is, I believe, the first to make that available. Once that's available, then and only then can the state actually review my estimated revenues for the year, so that, and that's a significant piece in setting the tax rate. So we're ahead of the game, folks. Nobody's delayed because of us this year.
Well done.
So, yeah, I'll pat myself on the back.
Yay, you guys. Good job. Thank you for the spreadsheet.
Yeah, I'll give you, I'll give you a huge kudos and to your team. Because, you know, the last two years, we've hit you pretty hard over the head. And about December, I think we started hitting you around the end of November. But you guys did fantastic this year. And you kept telling us, like, I just need to get everything.
Well, you know, we still aren't there. It still took us too long, in my opinion, but we are light years ahead.
You, you really are. Your whole team did great. You did great. Thank you for all of that. It really does benefit the towns to get those numbers earlier than later.
Oh, absolutely.
So greatly appreciate.
The deadline used to be September 1st.
It is September 1st.
Oh.
Absolutely is. That's, I just, I think acknowledged that it took me longer than I.
Well, you're good.
And we need to approve an extension.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it was approved by the state.
End of the conversation.
Yeah.
And actually, the state, because of all what's going on in Claremont and a couple other towns like Pittsfield, actually suggested out of the state that all school districts filed for an extension who hadn't had theirs done by the middle of August.
So I actually received an email today where there are people that are having to refile because of, of the school care situation, so.
Yep, they are, because they're getting bills of a million dollars, a million, two, a half a million, yep.
Yeah. So I did want to touch on that, that we do not have our coverage with school care. Health Trust had a meeting this week and they sent out slides and what have you. And I'm cautiously optimistic that it is not going to be as bad for us with healthcare as some like to project. We shall see. We'll have rates in a couple of weeks. So that's when we'll really know. And then I look, I'm looking forward to returning and resuming our two board meeting a month schedule. I think that starts next month, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I would like to revert back.
No, it is regardless.
I would like to revert back to presenting my monthly report, the first board meeting of the month. Having it at the end of the month has been all screwy. Currently, the, the report that I provide is by function. And unless I'm asked to make some changes, I'd like to continue with the format that I have been providing on a monthly basis with the explanations in the notes. And Chaz, for your benefit, that includes the revenue, it includes expenditures, and it's a comparison of actual to budget and factors in encumbrances and projections and and just any notations on any variances. I will also work on adding our direct expenses for all of our areas, as well as the high school to that monthly report, but I have to build it out. The system doesn't generate this for me, so. I just, I need to build out the structure and, and get the, get it set up so I have a process so we can do that routinely. So I guess that's, that's all that I have to say for now.
Well, that's a lot of good news, so. Appreciate hearing it.
For sure.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm really pleased with, with my staff and how we're progressing and really melding and thinking ahead of it.
All right, Misty, get her some chicken salad.
So she doesn't eat chicken, okay?
Oh.
I'll get her something.
You drain then.
She drain.
I have a question.
Oh, yes, please, Jamie.
Hi, Lori. I just want, it's not really a question, it's more like a comment. I just wanted to share that the Budget Committee actually enjoys your report and the format. They're very happy with the, the ones that you had shared throughout the year, so. I think they'll be happy to hear that you're still going to do it that way and that you might expand a little of the information. They appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do any of our other directors want to make a report of this thing? Soon enough. We will move on to.
I was looking at Zander and Zander's like, let's hear that. I am not, I'm not prepared.
I'm always prepared, ladies and gentlemen, I'm ready to go, just saying.
The first item on our old business to discuss tonight is the request that we've received to rename the Field House, actually not the Harvard Field, which is the first field, as you're coming up the driveway. So there were some conversational points the last time, so I'd like to continue that. I had to, that's all printed out here. Does anybody want to? Does anybody have a motion they'd like to make to open up?
Good question. Who are you naming it after?
So can we have a discussion without a motion?
Of course.
I got it. So earlier this year, a student, who was a former student at Fall Mountain, passed away from a sudden illness. He was every time, I'm sorry. They just know by now. Actually, George, can I invite you to speak about Riden?
Right here?
Yeah, you can stay there. You can speak up here, anywhere you're comfortable, just to give Mr. Street some background about how we got here, because I will not do it the same justice that George did.
I'm not sure I will be able to do this all the time. So as Alyssa said, Brayden Ray was a student here at Fall Mountain, an alumnus who went on to go to New Hampshire Technical Institute, graduated from there and was a four-year member of our soccer program here. And due to complications from the flu earlier this March, he, he passed away suddenly. He was a valued community member. He was a.
Four-year degree, right?
It was, I believe, 2021. One, 2021.
Oh, wow, recently, 2021, okay. I, I don't need to follow it.
So we'll share this with you. We do have a policy regarding the naming of buildings here. So if you want to go through that, we can give you a minute.
You have a question?
Okay, Jamie?
Sorry. So right now, it has a name on it. Correct?
There is no name on the Field House. The field itself has a name.
Oh, okay, all right. So we're not renaming the field?
Correct.
It's just the building.
So we would be dedicating the building to the memory of?
Very good.
That is what the request was.
Okay.
In the family.
Okay, all right. Thanks for the clarification.
So I will start and I gather, I have some concerns. Mostly because there are a lot of people who can come to us who have made an impact. And there are not a lot of opportunities here at Fall Mountain to put a name on a building or a field or, or any number of other structure. And I think one thing that we've done really well here is made our mission, which is to send people out to do great things. And I don't think that takes away from the memory of Brayden Ray. And so I put a lot of thought into this and talked with Deb Van So and her experiences in a lot of school districts. And one thing she has seen in other places that's been successful is to put a name, something along the lines of Memorial Field House and open it up for people who have somebody who means a lot to their family, to the district. It, I mean, it doesn't take away from the family in this deep, deep loss that they've had and their willingness to bring attention and care to this district. But it gives us a way to honor all the people who are in that same boat, or maybe in the near future. And so it's my thought that we name this Field House, the Memorial Field House, and allow our students to decorate it in such a way that they honor their peers. If anybody else has any thoughts on how that can be done so that we can encompass more.
I would prefer that we not. I would prefer that we not do the decoration, but I am in favor of a plaque. So if there's a student body that would like to bring someone forward, that a small memorial plaque is added to the building. I do think that building is large enough to support. I, I'm not talking about large plaques, but at least plaques that have their name, maybe their graduation date. Maybe what sports, you know, it doesn't need to be big, but I get a little nervous with decorating. Everybody has a different idea of what that is and just to kind of keep away from any.
Oh, childish design.
Well, yeah, or heated discussions when it's supposed to be a, a place of, you know. I, I like the plaque idea. I do like that and I, I do think that we, there are probably individuals in the past that have not been recognized due to, you know, not having enough buildings and not having enough of this, that there's, that I'm sure there is a. Due to, you know, not having enough buildings and not having enough of this, that there's, that I'm sure there is a.
Given the opportunity, they may wanna come forward.
I think so, yeah, yeah.
I like that idea. I like, I like the idea of not decorating cuz. Has that building not been named since two thousand and five out there?
Not, not, not the football field house.
If you look toward the football field as you go in, there's a building there and it says two plus the two thousand and five or something.
Because that barn.
It's a little barn.
That barn, yeah, I think it.
It's because I think they donated the money to build it.
Then we'll put a plaque on it, then paint it and put a plaque on it. I don't.
You can take that up.
Yeah.
Another.
But.
So.
I think, no problem. I don't know. I don't even know the boy, but if it was a good kid and he played for four years and. If somebody wants to do it, I guess, is the student body or the team or what?
So I raise my hand, I'm waiting patiently.
Yeah, once that Jamie, um, we've asked a question of George Disonosus in the audience. Go ahead, George.
Yeah, it's a proposal from our program to honor him.
Okay, go ahead, Jamie.
So I think that's a wonderful idea to name it the Memorial Field House. I think it's a great idea to. Uh, start with a plaque that has smaller, maybe uh one and a half by three. Inch wide gold, you know, little thingies that can be engraved on it. I think we need to have a process so that we don't get inundated. There's a lot of people who have been. Instrumental in many of the programs and keep in mind, we've been Fall Mountain for sixty years, okay? So, um, I only know that cuz it was formed on the same year I was born. It's actually gonna be sixty-one here shortly. Um, I think we should have a process and set it out there and perhaps speak to the A D. Maybe have people, you know, what, maybe have a forum that we could have from technology. They could put it online on a button or something. They could fill it out for a request. Send it to the A D or somebody who can vet the information and then bring it, you know, to where it needs to go to have the engraving done. But I think it needs a process.
My thought process is it's by the field, so you're not gonna have a football player. Is gonna wanna go on the soccer field. But if, you know, if you did have a football player that wanted something, then maybe we can address something over on that field or baseball field, but.
That makes very sense. I, that makes sense, Shelley. But I still think if we have a process for the soccer field, it could be then used for any of those field houses, right?
Right, but I think we can go bigger than a three by three plaque or a three.
Something that's readable.
Yeah, something that's seeable.
So we can address the.
Because I, I can already think of somebody else that should have a plaque there.
I'm gonna say, uh, yeah, we could maybe talk about the mechanics, get some. Yeah, get some samples.
I, I just think we need to um. Able this and have more discussion offline about what that process looks like. I mean, sounds like we need to update our policy a little bit. Look this, make this fit with the policy, um, be sure. Who should be doing this work? But I think there's more work needs to be done off offline before it comes back to the board.
Do, is it feasible to um, to make the motion and? Take a vote on hauling it Memorial Field House and then create. The process, knowing that we can tell the family this is what we're doing because the request was two months ago. We would like to get the answer.
I think we could do that. We can name.
Figure out a plaque. I just, you know.
No decorations. I make a motion, I'll make a motion that we um name the, that we. What am I doing? That I, that I'm.
John Cooper Hubbard Field, the Field House at John Cooper Hubbard Field. Memorial Field House.
Memorial Field House and. And create a process for having um. Names be submitted to be put onto that, onto, onto the Field House. Second, I think that's good.
Does anybody have any questions or concerns about that motion?
Are we gonna then go to do a subsequent one about the boy or?
No, he's gonna be.
Well, this would be included.
He'd be the first name that would be memorialized.
Okay, and that's part of the motion?
No. No, because it needs to be a part of the policy, which needs to have a process. That was Kevin's point.
Take it to the family and say, this is the process we're going through. Brayden will be our first person to use this. You will be the first person to use it for Brayden's honor.
Well, I didn't read this fully, but did that say something sort of guide us on what we're supposed to do or?
Well, we're changing this entirely, so we will have to adjust that policy. That's part of the motion.
You're not naming the, you're not naming a building after a person specific.
We're, we're renaming the building the Memorial Field House. And then we will, on that Memorial Field House, we will have plaques that are the people that are being memorialized.
And that's the policy we need.
That's the policy, no, I mean.
Are you okay with this?
I mean, I'm willing to accept what the board says. Uh, I guess I have one question. Uh, as far as. The naming of things, and I don't know if there's a difference between field and building, but um I. Understand that a monetary donation was made to call that the John Cooper Hubbard Field. Is there a policy that is in place that if money was raised that? You know, for instance, that building would be called um in somebody, after somebody's name.
I think I'm making this too difficult.
I, I just, I just think that, I just, I don't understand, I guess, uh, I know it's a field and a building. Um, so there's obviously like a difference in that and if this, if the. If the, you know, what, what the rules are is that the structure can't be named. Um, I'm just looking for clarification, I guess, as if we donate money, we're allowed to name a field here, but if. Money was donated to name a building in um in memory of somebody or for somebody that that is not placed, is that?
That actually, it's not a matter. Jamie, you wanna go ahead?
Yeah, I'd love to go ahead. Yeah, so the Hubbard's donated the money to build the field. So I, I'm pretty sure, and so the Field House. Correct me if I'm wrong, Misty, I don't know if you were there when the Field House was built. Um, I believe the money to build the Field House. Uh, was paid for by the district. Um, and so the difference, it, it's not a m- matter of. Whether or not somebody donates money or not. It's that the board is trying to. Recognize that there are multiple people who were very involved in the soccer program. At Fall Mountain over the last sixty years. And so we're trying to be sensitive to the fact. That we would like to recognize. You know, many people, not just one. Uh, very nice young man, I'm sure, and amazing student and player. Um. So I, I think we're trying to be thoughtful in that. In that respect or that manner. Um. You know, and I can't tell you, I can't remember why, I'm pretty sure it's because the Hubbard's um gave the money to build the field. But um, you know, and I can't tell you cuz that school board, you know, each school board makes its own decisions. Based on how the policies are written. Um. And so that's why, again, I said, you know, I'm stressing that I think we need to address this policy so that. It can accommodate, you know, multiple folks who I think should be recognized.
Yeah, this is well written. I, it says we can do it. Um, there's a request, I have no problem with it.
I don't, I don't think anybody's addressing his question and his question was very simple. And I think, you know, let's be honest, he's saying if, if his group. That really wants this done, if they gave us a significant amount of money, would we change our mind? It, am I following you correctly?
Yeah.
Or, I mean, let's.
No, the building's already there.
So, for me, that, that would be a no. And in it, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful, however, if there is something. It's very tricky, right? But if there was like a soccer board. Similar to one that was put down a patch. Wanted, wanted to go up with his name on it. I think that's something that you guys could probably come before the board. And we could have a discussion and and if, I, I, I don't know, it would depend on where you put it and. You know the logistics of what, what you're going through. However, on that particular Field House. I have to agree with Jamie that we're trying to be delicate because I went to school with someone. Who played soccer here for four years. The most magnificent person on the face of the earth. Hands down. And I think her whole team and her whole class, if they could have, would have already done that whole building. Without question. However, it would be nice to have him maybe be the first plaque. But then others to follow. And that, I think, is a wonderful. Significance to what he brings, right? So you, you've spoken to us about everything he has brought to the community, to the people around him. Now he's paving the way for Paul Mountain to be the first to do this project. Which honors not just him, but everybody that, that came before him. That had similar talents and similar gifts and brought similar happiness and respect. To, to their families and to their communities. So I don't know if that helps. But I do, I do hear you and I think we all do.
It, it helps and I'm not trying to be difficult at all. I'm trying to do right by this individual's family. I believe that, you know, the way that we wanna have our program is to honor people that have passed through and somebody. And, and, and to try to figure out. Ways to keep his memory alive, his legacy for, for the kids that followed our program and his family and that's, that's why this proposal was brought initially. Um, you know, I don't. Um, this is, this is also a very good idea. It's just that, you know. Our proposal initially was different and that is, again, based on the reasons I just kind of laid out, um, having talked to Brayden's family for over the summer and. So, um, you know, I'm, I, I know full well that we've had many, many people pass through the program. Um, both boys and girls, I'm lucky enough to have coached both sides that have been tremendous individuals and. Um, you know, I, I would love to honor them as well, so uh I, I accept whatever the board. Um, states, but just to have a little bit of background of our reasoning as well as.
I would say with proud. I make a motion to call our student.
All right, the motion on the table came, you know, back to us, to make the Field House, to John Cooper Hubbard Field, a memorial Field House.
And create a process for him to stay out of it.
Do I have a second? Okay.
We're starting the process at least?
I'm sorry?
We're starting the process?
Yes.
The, the motion is to call, rename it Memorial Field House.
Oh, to actually, and then to allow for plaques to be placed or?
Yeah, that's correct, yes.
Well, we're not renaming the Field House, it doesn't have a name. The field has a name.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're naming the.
Field House at John Cooper Hubbard Field.
Correct.
Memorial.
Okay, how do you vote, Jamie?
Teague, yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Erin, yes.
Evan, yes.
Sarah, yes.
Melissa, yes. Thank you for bringing it up. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to have these discussions.
Get a flag back.
I, I will reach out to his family as well.
Uh, thank you very much. I appreciate taking the time.
Thank you.
We have more on the next agenda. Draft, oh, see. Okay. Next on the old business is the evaluation M O U.
So just in short, looking at time, um, we do have a new evaluation tool that we're using this year. Is based off the Thoughtful Classroom. It was a joint um decision that was made with. Support staff and teachers since uh starting in twenty twenty-three. Um, this year, we're starting a very small portion of it. We are looking at two of the dimensions, relationships and. Um, professional practices. Those will be evaluated this year. We did have to create an M O U. It has been ratified by both. The support staff and the teachers union, so we are moving forward with that. And this is a, probably a multi-year plan to eventually have a full evaluation system. Um, based off the Thoughtful Classroom approach.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Chris on that? All right, seeing none, the withdrawal update. I don't know who's going to be giving us that report. Is there any member of that committee who would like to give us a report?
Well, the um, the Walpole group is um supposed to meet again tonight. Um, to um work on finalizing budget concepts. However, Carolyn is not going to be able to be in attendance at that meeting. But we will do the best we can.
Okay.
With a meeting right after this or something?
Yes.
It will be, it, it will be a cut one cuz, yeah. Cuz.
Our, our next meeting is next week. We plan at that meeting to vote on um recommending. Withdrawal for both Langdon and, that's, Chris on the agenda, so, or do I recommend it?
Whether we do or do not recommend.
Yeah, thank you. Withdraw for Langdon and Walpole. Um, however, given this change, there might be an extension.
No, I don't think so.
Okay, so that's next Monday.
Okay.
Our next vote, our next meeting.
Thank you, yes. All right, um. Our next order business is to. Pick up the leadership update that we. Recently addressed. Yes. Did anybody make the motion in accordance with?
I got it. So in accordance with RS, in New Hampshire, RSA one ninety-four C five, the district will operate under a shared leadership model.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, there will be a. A document going out to the public to talk a little bit about what the shared leadership model means. RSA one ninety-five C five indicates that the district can operate under. Sorry, that wasn't. To other administrators and that we will be looking to name a senior educational officer. So are there any other discussion points? Seeing none, Jamie?
We just.
All right, had, yeah, Jamie Teague, yes.
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 Erin, yes.
Evan, yes.
Yes.
Melissa, yes. Thank you very much. In accordance with that law. May I have a motion to appoint our senior educational officer?
Make a motion to appoint Christopher Young as senior educational officer effective September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five.
It's the twenty, yeah.
Twenty-ninth, sorry. It says twenty-three, right there.
Thank you. Is there any discussion about that motion? Seeing none, Jamie, how do you vote?
Teague, yes.
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 Erin, yes.
Evan, yes.
Sarah.
Melissa, yes. Uh, we've brought it to, to the leadership committee. All right, the next. Larger business I hope to get done in the next five minutes is that the state has changed personnel. Oh, gosh, no, no. Can I have a motion to approve personnel list?
I approve, I make a motion to approve the personnel list.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions, concerns on that fantastically long list?
Yeah.
Seeing none, Jamie? Seeing none. Jamie?
Teague, yes.
Yes. Can I just hang? Because I haven't seen whatever it is.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Erin, yes.
Seven, yes.
Sarah, yes.
Melissa, yes. Right, thank you very much. Now on to the revised RSA one ninety-three colon three. This is for information, um. The state of New Hampshire has changed RSA one ninety-three three. Backdating it to July first of twenty twenty-five. And what it means is essentially that students can go anywhere inter-district. That they want to go. We have the opportunity to set our own. Parameters for capacity and for student teacher ratio, but that is work that we have to do. The New Hampshire School Board Association has not put forth a draft policy on this yet, though we can do that in the middle of October. So it is work that is coming. It is work that we will have to do, but we just needed to be aware that. At this moment, students can go to any school they'd like to go to if we have capacity. Are there any questions on that? I'm not sure that I can answer them, but.
So somebody could, Charles Towne could go, say, I want to go to Viles and we, we make it happen?
As long as we have capacity to do so, yes.
How do we handle the funding? What's this?
That is something we will have to discuss with our current funding model.
There's a mechanism already in place for that. We just have to review it.
Was that because there are issues or problems? If the child was having some problems at one school, they could request to go to another or something?
No, there was already an interschool mechanism in place that's on the apportionment formula pages. Because we used to have that situation when those methods were first written. We had.
Charles Towne coming down or North Wallpole and that sort of thing?
And the Ridge Kids in Vilas going to Wallpole. So yes, that, that method. That information and that method was already in place and the numbers are already there, but because of some of. Yeah, because of some of the methods, we'll have to have a discussion to see if they still make sense. And then it's all will change it.
But so, so, um. Method three, uh, implements a tuition, um. To be charged between the communities if your, if your child, uh, attends school in another community. Um, so my concern with this is that, um. I don't know if concern is, so I, I don't know how to handle this because now the state's saying you get to go wherever you want. And so the town is going to be beholden to a parent's choice to then pay tuition to another community.
It, it says in G, if a student is reassigned to a public school or public academy, the superintendents. Or administrators involved in the reassignment should jointly establish a tuition rate for each, for such student. Some or all the tuition may be waived by the superintendent of the receiving district for good cause. Shown or pursuant to the school board policy of the receiving district.
Right, that doesn't negate the articles.
Right.
So. So that tuition is paid by the district or is expected to be paid by the, by the family?
No, it's inter-district tuition rate.
Towns.
Okay.
And so for us, now that, um, we had a policy, and I believe it was part of the state as well, that you could have no more than one. Per class or per school, however that worked out. And so we could then budget for that.
Right.
At this point, and because they backdated it, we haven't budgeted for these changes. So. How does that affect each of our five small towns if we have ten people from. Alstead who want to go to Wallpole, well, they haven't, we haven't appropriately budgeted for that.
Right, but they may have budgeted. Here's where it's going to create a problem, Melissa, is that. You know, most all of, for Alstead. For Acworth and Langdon, it won't. They pay tuition out for their kids already. So there's already an interest. An inter-district tuition established for them. So you're right, it would make a problem for. Towns that don't already have something built in. So you're right, Alstead. Alstead doesn't.
But it's only for middle school kids.
Right, so Acworth and, and Langdon don't have, um, tuition factored in for their.
For their element for, for our primary kids.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah.
Well, and.
Yep.
Figuring a number of students, like you could have five. Students from Langdon who now want to go, but we haven't appropriately. Um, budgeted for any sort of movement from Langdon to Alstead. Simply because there was a limit of one before.
But you don't have to approve them if they change the dollar amount of the. Cost to educate.
If there's capacity, we do have to approve it.
Yeah, it doesn't.
Yeah, their best interest basically is eliminated in this new law. Based on capacity only. But they don't define capacity. Student ratio and school capacity. Can't be based on class size.
So I've been trying to find out from our attorney, um, I've asked our attorney, I've asked, um, the School Board Association attorneys of. Would this, the law supersede our. Bylaws or, or articles of agreement. Um, and they all look at me and say, oh, this is intra-district. It doesn't matter. Well, most cooperatives do not charge tuition to go to school within their cooperative limits. That is unique to Fall Mountain.
Yes, I know.
So we have a lot to talk about at our next meeting. This is just for information.
Three minutes.
Oh, three minutes. So, um, next on the agenda is our new category for donations given. Just would like to thank all of those, uh, people and organizations and businesses for doing so. Thank you. So are there any other admin reports or questions on the admin reports that were in our file? Seeing none, we'll move to the treasurer's report, and I have a motion to accept.
Motion to accept the treasurer's report.
Okay.
Any questions on the treasurer's report, Valerie? Seeing none. Jamie?
Teague, yes, thank you.
Yes.
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 Sarah, yes.
Melissa, yes. Thank you so much. Sharon?
I make a motion, do it, Jerry.
Okay.
Right after I say, well, you have the me, the meeting, employee, employee of the meeting is long.
Do I have a second?
Don't get too.
Jamie, do I have you?
Teague, yes, sorry.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Karen, how do you vote?
Yes. Yes.
Melissa, yes. Thank you so much for getting us done by seven. Well done.